Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I did that. I just called the meeting to order at six thirty.
A little early.
Yeah.
Roll call.
My clock said six thirty. It's six thirty one on my clock right now.
I'll do the roll call, okay?
Yeah, that's what I asked. Yeah, sure.
Mr. Birdy?
Here.
Dr. Coupalletti?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Present.
This is Ragless.
Present.
Dr. Johnson.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, and I had already said the board didn't send me anything, so we don't have any items. I'm going to open the floor up to the board at the end for our committee reports, and they'll have opportunity to share at that time. So let's move on to Mr. Smith's reports. So Superintendent's Honors Diploma Program, Superintendent Smith?
Yes, Madam President and Board. Can everybody see this?
No, can't read it.
Okay.
What does it say?
Might just be in reverse. It's back, so.
That was fine.
Yeah.
It says Honors Diploma Scholar for Ernest Wilkie, and his mom allowed me to use his today. So every Honors Diploma student will get one of these placed in their yard. Mr. Martin and I will personally go around, and if they're board members, we'll start at two o'clock on Friday. If there are board members that will want to accompany us, we'll make sure we have the six feet social distance in place, and we're going to place this in their yard. The other thing that we're going to do, remember, this was a Honors Diploma dinner, recognizing those graduates. And so we've gone to food service, and the great work that's been done by Mr. Doctor. We're going to actually deliver a meal for four to their home, so we can at least keep that tradition going. And we're going to place a sign in their yard. We can get a picture of the graduate. Mr. Martin and I have agreed, we're going to do this twenty-five times on Friday, starting at two, and it doesn't matter how long it takes for us to get this done. So we're going to place the signs in their yard. They'll already have another sign in their yard that has been placed in for every graduate. Every graduate will receive, but these kids receive the Honors Diploma sign in their yard along with the meal, courtesy of the Food Service Department, and it is a dinner for four. So we can still at least have some of the traditional recognition in place. Unfortunately, we can't honor them the way that they really should be, but we're going to stretch it and do it and be as creative as we possibly can. So board members, if you're interested, you can meet me here at my office on Friday at two. Caravan with us to at least recognize the kids. And again, it doesn't matter how long it takes. We will get around to every child that deserves this recognition along with the dinner, as well as the sign in their yard.
Excuse me, is that at the district office?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll depart promptly at two o'clock in order to get it done, and Mr. Martin has in his schedule that we'll try to get this done between two and six. Hopefully, we can go faster depending on how were the kids. And this doesn't matter if we have kids that are enrolled that live in other communities. We're going to make sure we do this. This was the date it was supposed to happen, so we're going to stay with that traditional date. Any questions, comments, suggestions at this point?
Hmm, I don't have any.
Okay.
Did you, did we also, I do have a question. Did we also give the, do they also have like the regular Graduate of Wynton Woods sign in their yard as well?
Yes, I just mentioned that. They will have that sign in their yard along with the Honors Diploma sign, Doc.
Okay, and are we going to do the, are we going to do the ribbons on the fence?
Yes, those ribbons on the fence are still, we wanted to try to do as many traditional things as possible. The ribbons on the fence, the Women's Auxiliary, they said they would be more than happy to do it. They were hesitant because they didn't know if we wanted it, but that at least tells the community that we have three hundred-plus graduates moving on to the next, next chapter.
Do we have the number for how much scholarships? We didn't do the scholarship thing. Do we have, you usually post that as well?
That will be posted as well. It's past nine million dollars.
What was it last year? I can't remember, but, okay.
All right. Mr. Seymour says seven. He's the money guy, so he knows. Okay, all right. Anything on that particular topic for what's going to happen with the Honors Diploma kids? Okay. Doc, what's the next?
All right, the next item on the agenda is the synopsis of the graduation and the program.
Okay, so I'm going to just read a little of it, and then I'm going to have Mr. Martin come and give an overview. Guys, he has worked tirelessly on trying to create a virtual graduation for three hundred-plus kids. So this is not something you can do overnight, so just, you know, just bear with him. So it says, "On Saturday, May thirtieth, at four o'clock in the afternoon, Wynton Woods City Schools will broadcast a virtual commencement ceremony celebrating the class of 2020 on WSTR, STAR sixty-four, and CW, and local schools' Facebook Live. The virtual commencement will include the Pledge of Allegiance by Class President D'Amaggio Hill, and speeches by valedictorian Matthew Bernardo, salutatorian Isaiah Smith. Principal Eric Martin and Superintendent Smith, Board President Dr. Violet D. Johnson, will confer the graduates. The guest speaker who was selected by their peers is a Wynton Woods commencement official and will be announced at a forthcoming press release. Each student will be recognized individually during the ceremony. The one-hour graduation special will feature a video presentation and vocal performance celebrating our warriors' great achievement. In preparation for the virtual commencement, seniors will be receiving their capping gowns on today and tomorrow at a curbside pickup at Wynton Woods Intermedia School. As the graduates pull up to the, up in their vehicles, they will be given their capping gown to put on for a photo, which will be shown when their name is called at the ceremony. On May thirteenth, an audio recording of the reading of the names made and video recordings of all speakers will be done on the auditorium stage, which will be pristine and beautified for this occasion." So Mr. Martin is going to come take my seat and give you more details on it, okay?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So actually, I'm just now coming in from outside, so I'm a little, still chilled a little bit. We just put it, put the caps and gowns and took the pictures and put the yard signs that you asked about in the cars of half of our graduating class that came to pick their stuff up. So it was a really, 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 really good event. Just to give you a little overview in terms of what had to take place in order for us to make this thing work, this virtual graduation work. Last week, we was able to work with our vendor, which is Graduate Service, to adjust our caps and gowns. We typically use a rental gown. It's a really nice gown with the braided bead in it with the Wynton Woods logo, and it's a rental. So we usually get those gowns and we give them back, so we don't own those gowns. But of course, with what's going on in the pandemic, we were able to switch at the last minute to a keeper gown, so this year's graduates will be able to keep their gowns. So we, so we made that adjustment, but we had a little short turnaround time. So I was able to work through it with our, with our Graduate Service rep, and we were able to expediate the delivery. And they gave them to us last week, so they delivered them last Thursday. I got my team together, and we also got Mr. Smith involved as well, and we steam-pressed three hundred gowns just to ensure that there was no wrinkles for the picture. For our kids, we'll look as best as possible for this picture, because we believe the virtual graduation is going to be the best out. It's going to be the best one that happens this school year for the 2020 class. We want to make sure that this keepsake that we give our kids, even though it's not traditional, it's not, we usually do. We want to make sure that we give them a high-quality experience. So we took the time, we spent about ten hours steaming, steaming gowns, and yes, I know more about that than I ever want to know. So if you need any advice about steaming, just let me know. Right. So, so, so what we had to do, the gowns come in a bag and it comes folded and packaged. So if we'd have just given it to them today, when we, when they got it out the bag, it would have been wrinkled and it'd been folded, and it really wouldn't have the appearance that we wanted to have in terms of this great picture we want for the presentation in the virtual graduation. So we just took the time, gave it a little bit more care, steamed them up for the kids. Then we had to bag and tag them again, then we also had to attack it because we wanted to be mindful that in our curbside pickup, we had three actual pickup points. You had a pickup point for your sign and some information. The second pickup point is your capping gown, and the third pickup point is where you actually get out of the car. We place you in a certain location. For the young ladies, we give you a rose and we take your picture. Ms. Chris Shaw, Ms. Strauss was at that location to just make sure that our kids were really presentable, make sure we got what we want for the presentation. So, so, so we had to take a little bit more time. We spent about ten hours on Thursday, just make sure that the tassels was right. Make sure that the materials that we give our kids, the Wynton Woods, everyone had one. So just took a little bit of extra time with that. So then we rolled into today, which is our kickoff, and we were able to purchase, I'm not sure if Mr. Smith shared this with you guys at any point, we were able to purchase several extra-large signs to put on our school buses to really celebrate the class of 2020 and our graduating seniors. So we were able to place them at a strategic location in the parking lot, so when the families came in and they rolled around, they actually went past those big signs. There was so much excitement from our, from our seniors and their families. It was really a cool experience today. Just to, just to piggyback on the overview that Mr. Smith gave you guys, wanted to just talk a little bit more specifics, because when we worked with Channel Twelve WKRC to, to outline this program and give them the information that they can produce the right vision that we were looking for, for our kids, our graduates, for our community, we actually had to break down minute by minute, because we have an hour ceremony in terms of what this is going to look like. So just to give a little bit more detail in terms of what Mr. Smith presented, the presentation is going to start, the actual graduate ceremony is going to start with the, with the celebration of the class. It'll be more of a marketing video, the first thirty seconds. It'll be those, those great pictures of what it means to be a warrior, what went, that's about thirty seconds. Then we'll move into a thirty-second with pomp and circumstance playing in the background, and what it'll be, it'll be the actual program in terms of just an outline of what's going to happen for the graduation virtual ceremony, right? So then we'll come on with me with about a thirty-second welcome. And during that welcome, I'll acknowledge school board members as well as the superintendent. Then I'll introduce the class president, and he'll do the pledge of the allegiance. The class president will introduce the valedictorian. He has five minutes for his speech, valedictorian does. Valedictorian will introduce the salutatorian. He has four minutes for his speech. The salutatorian will introduce the class speaker, which is a senior class that was selected to give the, the, the class speech, and they have three minutes for their speech. After that, we'll have a choral selection from, it'll be from the members of the varsity ensemble. The senior members of the varsity ensemble will do a choral selection, so we're still working on that piece, but we're pretty excited about that. After that, I'll do the presentation of the class. Mr. Smith will do the certification of the class, and Dr. Johnson will do the authorization of the presentation of the diplomas. Then we move into the diploma presentation. So the four assistant principals, they have a whole section that they're doing Wednesday to where they have to do the audio portion, and they're actually going to call each of the names, each, so our two hundred and eighty graduates that we have, their names will be broken up into their different sections, and each one of the assistant principals will have a section of kids whose names they're calling. So in the production piece, there's a, there's calling the names the right way, making sure the volume's good, and then also matching it with the slide. And the slide will be the kid, it'll be the picture of the kid, the kid's name. It will also be maybe three important facts about the kid, so what's next? Specific awards that they won, and maybe something else about the kid, right? And, and it'll be in a window, in that slide will be their picture that we took today. There may be a couple of kids that, that wasn't able to do their, to do their pictures, will end up doing is doing a Wynton Woods. Well, what we'll end up doing is, is do a, a Wynton Woods logo, if that picture, if we don't have that picture of the kid.
There'll still be some information about the child.
But there'll still be information about the student.
Okay.
And after the presentation of the diplomas, we go to the alma mater. So we will sing that, and then we'll go to the tassel ceremony and the salute to the class of 2020, and that's done by the class president. At the conclusion, there is a four-minute video presentation, which is the salute to the class of 2020. And this, this, this has been a very interesting experience for me. I never knew that I would have to figure out how are we going to put on a virtual graduate, a virtual graduation for three hundred students, but we are figuring it out. We're pretty excited about this opportunity. We, I personally believe that our, our young people are going to have the ability to have a keepsake that classes before them never had the same opportunity. We believe it's going to be a high-quality presentation, it's going to be a high-quality ceremony, and the families will be able to cherish this forever. So, so, so we're excited. We got to get through tomorrow and get, get the rest of the class photographed, but, but we're extremely excited about this opportunity and what this is going to, to mean to our families. We saw many smiles today and many thank yous and, and many happy faces that, that our, that our families feel the love and they feel like their kids are being acknowledged for all the hard work over the years.
Okay, questions?
Any questions for me?
Yes, this is John Coupalletti. Thank you, Mr. Martin, for all your work. Now, what time, and can you give me the date and the time and how we access it?
Yes, sir. So it will be May the thirtieth at four PM. We should have within the next couple of days which channel it'll be on, but it'll be between STAR sixty-four and the CW. These are two channels that are part of the WKRC network.
Mr. Martin, this is Mr. McGowan. I don't know if it's a question or a statement, but I guess because we're doing this, I've been to a lot of graduation, and it's always an issue about a whole bunch of people making a lot of noise when they, when they say, hey, Billy Johnson. So now everybody can scream as loud as they want, I assume, right?
Yeah, yes, they can, sir, you know, and unfortunately, you didn't get to experience the Wynton Woods graduation as a school board member this year, but next year, you'll, you'll, you'll feel the full impact. You know, we, we, we take pride in giving our kids an opportunity to set the expectations at our graduation, and each one of our graduations in person starts with our young people setting the expectations for how the graduation is going to go. We, we've done, we've done a pretty good job the last five years, and we're excited about that happening for the class of 2021, for what they're going to experience this time. They can yell as loud as they want. This is going to be, this is going to be time to celebrate. Yes, sir. So I agree with that.
Congratulations. Thanks for everything.
Thank you.
And Mr. McGowan, I think you would, I think Wynton Woods is actually my favorite graduation. It's well-done, and the kids are in charge. We don't have a whole lot of adults up there taking up all the time. The kids are doing their thing, so. But anyways, Mr. Martin, thank you so much. Um, there's a lot of conversation about these graduations, and I would not want to be you in trying to figure that out. So thank you for your planning, along with Mr. Smith and your team, and making it exciting for our students in these unprecedented times.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. The, the idea about the yellow buses, I think that is, that's really good. I'm sure there were some parents and students that stopped to get pictures of that. I wish, are we going to have those up there on this week so that if we want to come by and take pictures?
Park the buses at our house?
No, you can't park it on my street. It's too, I live on a short street.
With a short bus?
Yes, with a short bus. It's all good. It's all good. But I, I like to get a picture of that. I mean, I don't know, you guys probably have a picture of it. You're going to put on a website. I could snag it from there, but I like to get a picture.
So, so, so Dr. Johnson, those were great statements. So we actually have three bus outfit with the, with the large signs celebrating our students, and we're going to park one of the buses in each of the three communities that our district serves. So there'll be a bus in Springfield Township, there'll be a bus in Green Hills, and there'll be a bus in Forest Park. And there are going to be high-traffic locations. Mr. Smith is working with Mrs. Denny to ensure that they're in no specific locations with transportation. So, so yes, we're excited about that, and kids and families were asking, were they, were they going to be somewhere where they can see them at later dates? So, so we're excited about that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just something else to kind of help them make it special, and they can go take pictures in their capping gown beside the bus, you know, like later after the event, you know, so I just think that.
Dr. Johnson, can you hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes, I can.
We wanted to do, Mr. Martin and his team, first of all, they've done an amazing job, but it becomes part of our tradition for the future. So we wanted to capture something from the virtual graduation, even though this is the first time ever, launch it into a traditional graduation that we hope to have in the future, that these two things come together to become part of Wynton Woods tradition. So the buses now will join what happens with the ceremonial ribbons that go down way across. So stay tuned.
So I do have one question, Mr. Martin. Would be, would it be possible to have a cameo by Dr. Johnson expressing the congratulations of the board?
So again, we have a, we have a, a hour, it refers to the whole presentation, and I don't believe that there's enough time in the, in that hour to add anything else, because it's like minute by second by second by second accounted for. I know that we, we have to, we have to give them another run. I believe after we get through video and on Wednesday, it will take account of the minutes again in terms of how long it takes to get through what we need to get through, to see if anything needs to be deleted in order to make sure that our hour fits. There's time left over, if that's the wishes of Mr. Smith and, and the school board. If there's time left over, I'm sure that there wouldn't be an issue with that, but I'm not, I can't commit to that right now, because we're right at an hour.
We'll figure out, we'll figure it out. We'll figure it out, because we always do. Coupalletti, that's a good question, you know, because I think the board wants important to make sure that they're part of the ceremonial event, even though they won't be there in person, but I think it's important to make sure that people know exactly how the board helped endorse this opportunity for young people. So we'll figure, we'll figure it out.
And my, and my last piece before I move out of there, out of the way and let Mr. Smith get back, get back to his business, oh, actually, it's two pieces. We, we have started just trying to identify some different ways in terms of celebrating our kids. One of the things that our staff did at the high school, we did a flip grid, and we're figuring out how we're going to market that piece to where it's just the staff saying, congratulations, we're excited about your future, good luck in your next chapter. And I, I believe that we can probably figure something like that for you guys to add you into that piece, because I know the marketing team, then the PR team with Miss Denny and Miss Jackson, we're figuring out how we build up to the graduation day by keep posting stuff on our social media outlets to get people excited about what's going to happen on May thirtieth. So there may be a number of different opportunities, those kinds of things, but I'm not sure if you guys are friends with me, but we're already starting to do that with some of our famous quarters of Wynton Woods and our alumni. They're sending little fifteen-second snippets about, hey, good luck, class of 2020 Wynton Woods Warriors, so.
Here's, here's another idea while we are, we're all together. What really might be a nice kickoff is the last conversations on the technology, the process that Mr. Martin and his team are using, if that came from the five board members, just a portion of sending the kids off, having some acknowledgement. How long is that? How long do they get to speak?
So the, the flip grid is, I think it's like a fifteen second, it could be like a thirty second flip grid. What, what we can end up doing is sending you guys the code with your Wynton Woods emails.
That would be good.
And then you will do it in the, in the, in the, in your own homes, so you can just turn your computer on, click the button, and video yourself, and if you didn't like what you said, you can delete it and do it over again. The only thing that we ask is that you're wearing some Wynton Woods something, you know, to really put that out there in terms of having the Wynton Woods colors and the logos out there, and we can figure that out. Actually, we could have that code sent tomorrow. You guys could have that code tomorrow.
You know, Mr. Martin, as you were talking, I remember you saying in your outline of everything that you were going to do, how the outline of the, the service or the program, you said you were going to introduce the board members. Didn't I hear you say that? I was wondering if it would be possible for a picture of the board members to be flashed up at that time. You know, like, you know, I know that there's a picture of us on the website. I don't know if you want to snag that one or if you want everybody to send in a picture of them in their capping gown or whatever, but, you know, I would, I would think as, as you were introducing us, if you just had a picture of all five of us, you know, there, you know what I'm saying, we wouldn't get to stand up and wave, but at least there would be a picture of us as you were saying our names. You know, I mean, that might be a way to at least acknowledge the five board members, you know, during the ceremony.
I, I think that's a good point. So we can actually do it two ways. We can do the flip grid that Mr. Martin mentioned, also do the acknowledgement in the beginning. The, what, what I would like to see us do, though, if we're going to make sure that this is a formal opportunity where he's calling names, if you guys had on a formal attire, that would even be better. If you had on a capping gown.
Right.
When he calls your name, that picture flashes up, so we don't have to get a picture of you in a capping gown. And anybody that doesn't have one will work on figuring it out through graduate services to get one, okay?
So we just need somebody to take a picture of us in our capping gown and send it to you.
We'll send, we'll, we'll figure out a way to get you out of your homes, and Drew Jackson will come and get your picture.
Okay, all right. That, that, I mean, I was just trying to think of a way to do it where you wouldn't take up any more time in your timeline, because I know
That would be perfect, Doc.
An hour goes really fast, so it might not be enough time for us even to have a twenty-second or thirty-second, you know, because all five of us, that adds up to another minute or two minutes. And so if you're calling our names anyway, if our picture could come up as you're calling our names, that would, you know, that would take up that time that you are already going to use to call our name anyway.
It'll be perfect. I like it.
I'm okay with that, and again, I think the one thing that I really appreciate about Wynton Woods graduations is that the kids are in the forefront of the celebration. So I think that would accomplish it as well, as far as getting acknowledgement of the board and showing a picture of who we are.
Raise your hand if you need a capping gown.
If anybody needs a capping gown, raise your hand.
All right, only Mr. McGowan, okay? All right, very good.
And, and again, I appreciate you guys for giving me the opportunity to, to share what our plans are for our young people. We're excited about the class of 2020, and I want to also make sure that I say that I really appreciate Mr. Smith's approach through, through this experience, through the, through the, through the pandemic. I have a lot of friends throughout Cincinnati and across the state who have been struggling with what they were going to do in terms of how they were going to acknowledge and celebrate their graduating class, and I can appreciate that Mr. Smith took the time and didn't want to take our families and our communities and get their hopes up high and say, we're going to do this, and then have them down, and then tell we're going to do this and have to break them down. Really appreciate that he took the time to be thoughtful and really be thinking about what's going to be the impact and what's really doable. And, and that says a lot in terms of his leadership and giving me the opportunity to do what I do best, and that's work for kids. So, so I wanted to make sure that I took that, that time, because there's a lot of different places that aren't in the situation we're in right now.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, do you have anything else you want to add to anything that Mr. Martin said or anything about graduation?
No, I think that we, we touched on it. I think everybody got a chance to give some feedback, and Mr. Birdy, we didn't hear from you. Do you have anything you want to say, sir, or add to it?
No, sir. Sounds great. Thanks for all the work you guys have done.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is the treasurer's report. And Randy, you have the floor. I don't know if you have ability to share your computer with us or, or whatever, but there's two items that, that you have on there, is the resolution of employment and compensation during the COVID-19 pandemic and the November levy information in addition to the treasurer's report. So you can go through all three of those as you're, have the floor. So you can go through all three of those as you're have the floor.
Okay, um the the first item is uh employment and compensation during COVID. We only, Mr. Smith and I only bring this to you because it was recommended by the uh several webinars we've had with Ohio Treasurers that we know Ohio Code requires us to pay employment contracts. And uh Mr. and I've discussed this a lot. And we know that everybody that was under a contract was to continue to be paid and continue virtual learning or be reassigned to other duties. So this only includes employees that were under contract by the Board of Education. Yeah, uh what we're just asking is that the board go ahead and give me uh a set authority based upon the knowledge that you knew that I was continuing to pay all contracted employees with only one exception, extracurricular spring sports. Uh it was decided that we would only pay uh one third of that based upon the efforts that those coaches put in prior to the um this banning of the sports or stopping the sports by the Ohio Athletic Association. So we're asking you to approve that resolution uh tonight. And it's only it's only to be uh as a backup during an audit, uh letting, knowing that I shared with the board that I was paying all employees their contracted salaries during this period.
Okay, um now, since this is a resolution, do you think we should read the resolution before we take a vote on that resolution?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read that resolution. It's in a board docs, um board, uh this is in a board doc. Resolution for employment and compensation during COVID nineteen pandemic. We're going to uh take a vote in a minute to adopt this. Uh during this time of unprecedented circumstances of the COVID nineteen pandemic, the Board of Education will honor all employee contracts at one hundred percent of their total compensation as the pre K through twelve educational program continues with a virtual format. The only exception is the spring sports supplemental contracts. All spring sports supplemental contracts will be prorated to uh thirty-three and one-third percent on their original stated salary. Due to the governor's decision regarding social distancing and the potential threat of COVID nineteen, the spring sports program was canceled. However, the coaches worked with their athletes in preparation of the season. For this reason, their contract of employment is being prorated. So at this time, board, I will take a motion to approve this uh resolution.
I make a motion to approve the resolution for employment and compensation during the COVID nineteen pandem- pandemic as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been motion and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion?
Uh with regard to the second paragraph, is uh is there any legal or labor uh questions um that or have they been answered?
Rain, uh Randy, you're on mute. Mr. Smith's computer is on mute. Down at the bottom. Go to the bottom of your screen. You should see where it says video and mute and you should be able to unmute it. The bottom left.
There you go.
There you go. So uh would you repeat that question, Dr.?
Yeah, I must have hit something on his keyboard.
Okay, well, you just did it again. He just hit it again. I love him.
You hear it?
Yes, here. Now, Dr. Cooper Lenny, repeat your question, please.
With regard to the second paragraph, have all questions, legal questions and uh questions of labor contracts been addressed?
Yes, uh could there be a grievance filed later? Yes. Are all districts doing the spring sports the same? No. Some are paying nothing, some are paying all of it, some are paying half of it. And it was decided here that they fulfilled one-third of that obligation. If one of the coaches would choose to grieve it and take it to the association, I guess it could become. But as for right now, this was our decision to pay one-third of the contract.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Um just to chime in on that, um I don't, not from a legal perspective, but I do know just like uh what Randy said, it's kind of at the discretion of the school board. I know at Purcell, I'm getting, as a spring sport coach, I was, I'm getting the thirty-three point three percent. They're paying me and my coaches a third, but I do know that my friend at La Salle, they're paying their coaches a hundred percent. So I think it's at the discretion of whatever school district that you are associated with.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan, for that information um so that uh we can kind of be informed as we make this decision. Um I think that since the sports didn't go on, it seems fair to me to pay them something for the prep time um and not take them for granted because we do want them to come back next year if it's, you know, a a decision that uh we want to make uh for them to come back. So um you know, I um appreciate the input and that was a good question, Dr. Cooper Lenny, because we need to kind of be able to fill those questions before they come flooding in on us, you know. So are there any other uh questions or discussion at this time? Seeing uh Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Mr. Birdy?
Hi.
Dr. Cooper Lenny?
I.
Mr. McGowan's?
Hi.
This is Redless?
Hi.
And Dr. Johnson?
Hi, that vote passes unanimously. Uh and Mr. Seymour, you have the next item on the agenda as well about the November levy.
Yes, uh I'm just bringing it to you at the work session in case you have any questions. As you know, I'm uh in the past, board has never wanted to pass uh one of the resolutions either of necessity or to proceed with the uh levy at or uh that only at a regular meeting. So in order to meet the November deadline, I will be bringing the first resolution to you next Monday. Uh the res- resolution of necessity where you pass the need to the county auditor and then they state the millage comes back and then we proceed with the resolution to proceed with the levy. The levy is still in your five-year forecast, which will be presented to you next Monday night. And um I think Mr. Smith is still on board with we continue with that emergency levy. You know, we're going to suffer some cuts this year. We know we're going to suffer some cuts, additional cuts next year. And we cannot also absorb loss of three to two million in our forecast. So we need to put that out before our voters again. And I was just sharing that with you. And if you saw the attachment in board docs, it's just a timeline. And I wrote the uh resolutions and the dates where the board would be passing those.
Yeah, there is a document board in uh board docs for filing deadlines for twenty twenty elections that Mr. Seymour has put out there for us to uh look at. So um that will be at our next meeting. Anybody have any questions?
To give you a heads up. And then if you had any questions about it or concerns, I I think that Mr. Smith and I are both on board that we continue with this levy because it is needed. Not knowing until when, the March twenty-seventh, we didn't have much ti- time to turn around and get it back on again.
And there are some cuts, board, coming from the state with regards to, you know, state funding. So that that's going to cut deep into, you know, um you know, what we're, what we've had planned. So um I think this is, like you said, uh the necessity of of being able to run um our operations, so.
I don't want to give too much to propose cuts until we have an executive session to discuss some of those issues.
Okay. All right, good. All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Seymour. Is there anything else?
That's all. I just wanted to share with you that that would be coming.
Okay. Very good. Um the next item on our agenda are our committee reports. And um we have the financial advisory committee. Is there anything going on in that uh area, Mr. Birdy?
Uh no, not right now.
All right, thank you. Uh the next uh one is the student achievement committee. And um we did have a meeting today, as a matter of fact. Uh it it had been put off a couple of times because people's schedules and what was going on with trying to get everything ready for graduation and everything. But um we talked today about the summer and the Saturday um uh uh academics for our students. Uh we're trying to capture those students who are at most at risk. Um a- and uh there were several uh things that we uh talked about during that uh meeting time uh with respect to um what that would look like. And um eh eh you know, in the summer, students are already scheduled to be at home. But Mr. Smith had proposed to his executive team um some some options of like maybe having ten students present in front of the teacher with a ten feet span between them and ten students uh electronically um uh in in a virtual setting. And then that teacher could um could actually reach twenty students at a time. Uh it's a three-hour time period that they would be working. Um so all the details haven't been worked out, but uh as he stated in our meeting today, and Mr. Smith, you can jump in and give us more details about this. But he did state today that it's uh probably uh a good thing that we kind of do this almost, not saying we're experimenting on the kids because that's certainly not what we're doing, but almost as a pilot to see what the fall might look like. Because we're not really sure. And one of the questions that was asked was, okay, in the summer, parents are prepared for their kids to be home. They might have alternative daycare or whatever set up. But during the school year, if parents start getting called back to work and you're doing some sort of flip-flop kind of schedule, you know, like some of them are at home, if they're at home, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, or Tuesday, whatever the schedule might look like. Um what with the pre K through six, they need to be supervised at home. You know, because parents usually depend on those kids being at school during that time. So um that was one of the questions that was brought up. Um we also talked about using um the CARE Act uh money to fund some of the um some of the things that would be going on during that time. Um talked about getting um, you know, getting the teachers, you know, recruiting the teachers to actually do it. Um you know, the kids keep having the kids keep a mask on, you know, during the time that they're in um the class, live class session. There were a lot of pieces, there's a lot of still a lot of moving parts that still need to be figured out. And uh Mr. Smith, if you want to just kind of jump in and give some more details about what we talked about?
Uh thank you, Dr. Johnson. I think you gave a great overview. Uh one of the major pieces, we do know that um this is as the people keep using this term very loosely, unprecedented. And no student has had ever had five months of uh without school, okay? Uh if people are saying, oh, yeah, I'm familiar with this, I want to know where, because no one's done this before. So the shortfall, we have to make up for the kids' lost time uh in the classroom. We were thinking that if the governor released or made some other statements about how you can open school, one of the things that we wanted to do, and Dr. Johnson uh said it eloquently, this is not an experiment on kids. This is an opportunity to give services to kids who need them most, uh expecting our students with disabilities. So we would actually create a real classroom where the students would come in and it would be a teacher, they are a real teacher present, maybe ten kids. And there would be another ten kids working on their assignments. It's a flip classroom. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the model, but I am, where those kids are working on assignments at home. And then it's thirty minutes worth of instructional time. The kids sitting in front of the teacher actually start working on their work with Chromebooks still, this is still a technology-based instructional model. Then the kids at home, the teacher uh can actually connect with the ti- the ten kids at home and still create another experience for them where it's not an overburden to the teacher, it's not an overburden to the kids. So this gives us an opportunity in a summer virtual and also real-time uh opportunity to see if this expansion is going to work for the fall. Some people were saying that school may be open on time. Uh there's others that are saying that it won't open until November, and then some are saying that it won't open to January. I cannot afford for the students not to have instructional strategies in front of them up until January. So of course, August is ideal, but uh my job now uh that you guys have charged me with is how to make sure that students are being uh given the the opportunity to be educated with a level of fidelity where they can move to the next grade and not have shortcomings along the way. It is a challenge. However, uh we are, we are up to the challenge and we will figure out a way to make it work for all students in our care. The last part of it, um there are two more more parts of it. The other part is we have um we've probably been the only district in this region to issue Chromebooks to students in grades two through twelve, okay? We're now trying to strategize how to figure out how to get Chromebooks in the hands of first graders. Because, guys, I'm telling you, the packets don't work. They started out being a good novel piece. But then you have to talk about who's going to grade the packets, how often do the packets come in? So it's a shortfall of getting information back to students. Uh we want to be able to get that information back to families rapidly so the kids know exactly what their uh responsibilities are in the classroom. And then here's the final one. Uh we are actually in a good strategic place. Uh we will have buildings that will open in the spring. To the board, this may be an opportunity to create a year-round experience. Where with a year-round school, we can make the shortfalls, uh we can keep working with kids, engaging year-round. They would still get their winter breaks, they would still get their spring breaks, they would still get vacations like they normally would. But then students would go in what's called an intercession where students who need additional services would get them, the other kids would be on breaks. The one thing that really puts us in a good position is, number one, our schools are designed for PBL. Number two, they're designed for group enhancement. Number three, they're going to be air-conditioned and have all the amenities. So if the season gets hot, the temperature gets too cold, we have all the amenities in the building to make it work year-round for every student in our care. So those are things that we're thinking of down the road because, as you know, um some of these kids have shortfalls. They've, they would have had shortfalls even without COVID. So we have to figure out a way to put it in place. Someone mentioned, and this may be something that Mr. McGowan can speak on. Someone mentioned, if you go to a year-round experience, how do you take the issue of AAU into accountability where the kids are traveling with their road teams? Well, guess what? If you are in a year-round experience, you take your Chromebook with you. Uh for those of you who've experienced AAU baseball, volleyball, softball, uh basketball, baseball, those kids are not on the field all of the time. So they would have the ability to take the Chromebooks, still interact with the teacher, which now gives you a better chance of being an NCAA qualifier. Because let's face it, guys, many of the kids who struggle academically that are athletes, they don't know what to do with that time when they're traveling with their team. So we would actually be giving them some experience, prepping them for, when you're with your team on the road, this is what you do with your Chromebook because you're still connected with your school and your university. AAU unfortunately only worries about the athletic part of it. We can put that model together and do something unprecedented that no one else is doing, putting AAU in conjunction with our regular academic formula to create a real wholesome uh process for kids. For young people who have to work, guess what? You can create that same experience where the kids are on intercessions, still connected with their Chromebook to make the opportunity go forward. So if we're going to change, make some changes. This is the best time to make changes because we have the buildings, we'll have the facilities to do it, we'll have the teachers squared away to do it. And we'll have the technology in hand to make sure that no kid is being lost along the way.
I think that's um um very innovative. I'll I've I also think that whenever there's a crises, we got to figure out what are the ways that we can take advantage of this. And I think that this is a is a good opportunity because even if students are going on vacation with their parents, they still have their Chromebooks and all and all of those things that you typically try to get around in the summer. But it also underscores the fact that we're not just looking right in front of us for the pandemic. We're looking out further, which is important.
Yeah, what happens next?
For us to say, okay, if we want, I consider what happens next, what happens next with longer. So having a forward thought to think about that right now gives, try and work, work out some of the, the kinks if we choose to move forward. Well, thank you for, for that. And especially not some additional support. This is a great way to utilize the technology to fill in the gap.
Very good. You're, you're correct.
Mr. Smith, the other thing that I thought about that was talked about is, is the individual academic plan that we're working on putting all the students on. We have the Individual Education Plan, and that's designed for the students with disabilities. But we had already, Mr. Smith had already talked about putting each student on an individual academic plan and using that plan to figure out what students were at the, the highest risk, which ones that we need to target to get to, to get them either in the summer program or the Saturday program, using that as, as a marker. And just, I just appreciate the visionary leadership. And, you know, you know, necessity is the mother of invention. And we, out of necessity, have come up with these, these ways of doing things different, but still very progressive and very successful, you know? I know Mrs. Ruggles and I had a meeting with Mr. Smith. And we were talking about how, you know, Wenton Woods giving all, technology, sending it home with some of the, some of the, the elementary school kids, how that some of the people who are paying for their kids to go to elementary school, of the private schools are not getting that. And as a result, they're looking like, well, now wait a minute. I could go to the public school for free and get, you know, get the technology and get, if I'm teaching them myself at home anyway, you know? And so we may, as a result of that, I mean, we were talking about that in another meeting, but it goes along with student achievement, we may see an increase in our enrollment in our lower grades. You know, for people who are within our district, who have been traditionally paying for their kids to go to a private school. But if they're going to have to teach them at home themselves, and then they could come within their own district, get a, get to technology and still have some other access to teachers, you know? We might see that, that surge. We'll have to wait and see if that happens.
Well, Dr. Johnson, you, you make a great point. And I know Mr. Seymour's heard it in the treasurer's meetings. And I'm on the line with superintendents every Tuesday at eight, every Thursday at eight, and every Friday at eight, talking about some of the strategies and some of the things we're implementing. And students of, parents that have students in private and parochial schools are saying, I am not going to pay $1,500 a month for a virtual experience. When I can get a virtual experience in my public school, and they actually are supplying me with the devices. So we just have to stay tuned and, and see how it works. I'm hoping, my, my goal at this point, and that's why we had coaches calling the parents of students that are open and enrolled in other districts and students that are homeschooled, we still make contact with those students because they're still our students. We still have a responsibility for them. And I think it just kind of shows the character of who we are and what we do at Wenton Woods City Schools that any kid that's supposed to be our kid, we're going to look out for them and make sure they have the best experience possible.
And I think that this, this time has really changed the landscape of education for both K through 12 and higher ed. We also, in that meeting, we also talked about, you know, some students, if, if they're still doing online coursework, some students at the collegiate level may decide to take courses at a community college instead of paying the extra money to go to UC Xavier or some of those things, some of those places. So you have to take advantage of the opportunity to find how, how can we take advantage of this situation? And having the expanded ability to address the students who have disabilities also gives us the expanded ability to address and provide additional enrichment for students who are gifted.
Absolutely.
Yes, yes, we can't forget.
Students in our district, we have students who struggle, like every other district, middle who are catching on and understanding. And then there are students that are gifted. From my seat, we can't afford to neglect either one of those kids. Many times, we put a lot of resources into the student who struggles. But there are gifted families who say, we like Wenton Woods because of the gifted opportunities and gifted classes. We cannot let that fall apart, because that's part of our mantra and who we are. So we have to just try to figure out how to juggle all of this at the same time. It can be done. I have an incredible team of people who are willing to work countless hours to make it happen. And I appreciate the support of the board figuring out a way to allow us to do our work so that we can make sure every child is educated to the best of our ability.
Um, I, I, that, that's about all I remember, Superintendent. Mrs. Ruggles, do you have anything that, on the horizon of student achievement between our meeting that we had earlier? And anything else?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. All right. Well, that's the, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry. Yes.
Would you, if you have another meeting, will you email me so that I can attend?
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank, thank you.
So that was the Student Achievement Committee report. We have Community Engagement. Anything from Community Engagement?
Well, the Community Engagement piece, of course, right now is the graduates. And we're actually, you know, with the bus coming around, with all of the signage about the graduates and all the excitement about what's going to be posted in the yard. 300 signs are going to be posted in yards very soon. And again, I, I think the, the, the work in the high school, where they steamed every single gown so that the kids would look right when they took their picture, is something that you just don't see everywhere. So that's an engaging piece. It's, it's, it's a, it's an, it's a soft piece where it's not a lot of fanfare and conversation about it. But I think the ribbons will give our community just a real testimony about who we are, what we want to do. And Mr. Martin mentioned, and I, I had mentioned this to the, to the board president and vice president, a lot of districts were making a lot of promises about having proms, traditional graduations. And Wenton Woods stayed true to what the governor said. You have to have these virtual experiences. You can only have about 10 people. And we knew we couldn't pull that off, couldn't pull off having a 10-person attendance at a graduation. We knew that we couldn't do a six-feet issue. We'll, it, it would create a level of social distancing. It would create all kinds of storms, and we would be in the news for not following the governor's order. So we decided to move full force on the virtual experience, and I think it tells a lot to the community. There were some parents who called me very upset in the beginning, saying, Indian Hills is going to have a regular ceremony, and this school is going to-
Roger Bacon, we got a couple emails about that.
And we, and we got to the point where we said, parents, please be patient. We're following the directives of the CDC. We're following the directives of the governor. And we want to keep the students safe as well as have this experience for them. We, you, teachers are, have called me on the phone in tears, saying that they cannot celebrate with their children the way they really wanted to. These teachers have been with these kids for many, many years, and they wanted to have the, the regular celebration. But we said that based on what we have to know about the pandemic, we had to be very, very careful about it. I do know that there are board members that are, you know, monitoring with us today that would, if we had a traditional graduation and ceremony at the Centa Center, I know there are some board members that would say, Sue, I don't, I don't know if I can do it because of the, the danger that's out there. There would be some parents that would not even allow their children to attend if we broke the governor's orders and did something out of the ordinary. So this has been a trying time for us. But we did not want to put, and it wasn't that we were lacking or we were falling behind. We just didn't want to put something out there that we would have to retract later on. Unfortunately, those districts are in a, in a compromising situation because they take all of the information off their website. They have to retract all the information that they gave to the public. And now they have to figure out the virtual experience. No drive-ins, no parades, no experiences of 10. So if I came to the board and I said, hey, listen, I think we worked it out. And we're going to have, we're only going to have 10 people attend the graduation. And what you guys would have said, that's not going to work. So we knew it. We talked about the stadium. The stadium doesn't have individual chairs. We can't create the six-feet distance in the stadium. People get, out their kids, calling their names, running through the process, it would have been a nightmare. So we put the best plan together for children and the best plan for the safety of our community. And I am happy that the board is supporting the work that we've done because this is for children, and, and that's what we should be doing.
Yes, thank you, Superintendent Smith. The next thing was Political Jurisdiction Liaison. Does, do we have an update on, other than what Mr. Seymour gave us about putting it back on? I didn't get, I tried to look up the statistics to see what our, what our levy numbers were, and I did not find them. So they, some votes were still out. I don't know if they're still counting. I don't know what's going on with that. Do you have any idea, Mr. Smith or Mr. Seymour?
Well, interesting. We were, we were very surprised. And when you look at the history of Wenton Woods, I don't know who has the longest history in the, in the community. But there have been levies that have been defeated with numbers larger than what we received. It was really close to a 60-40. And we realized that we did not have the opportunity to go back out and knock on doors because during the pandemic, who was going to answer the door? That was going to be our full-court press to do something at the beginning. Of course, the team was very disappointed that it didn't pass. But we realized that we had a disadvantage. And from this particular seat, the team is ready to launch full force and to go back out there and to, say to, to all of our constituents, here's why we need the money. And now we have to talk about it from a different perspective that we'll have a chance to give the board during our executive team meeting today.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And just not necessarily on the same note, but I have some things for the legislative updates. If you check your emails, when I get those, I'm usually just forwarding them to you. So if you don't want them, just delete them. I get things from NSBA. I get things, you know, from Mr. Smith. Get, get-
Well, don't delete mine, Dr. Johnson.
I don't delete yours. I'm telling them if they want to delete them. I don't delete any of them. I keep them all. But I'm just saying, I send all of them forward, and sometimes it could just be a little overwhelming.
I feel better now.
Yes, thank you. You should. But I do send the, it's like the legislative information. And, and sometimes it's just good to know on the National School Board Association, since this pandemic has affected all of the United States, what other, all of the United States. It's good to see what other districts are doing, and some of that information is in there, you know? So I've been sending those out to you. So, you know, just kind of take a look at those, if you will. There is a need. The, the next item is our executive session. And I guess Mrs. Hobbs is still somewhere around, unless anybody has, and we, we can, well, let's do this. Let's go ahead and do our open floor comments for the board, if anybody has anything that they want to add at this time. And then we'll go into executive session so someone can think about their, you know, motion to go into executive session. But right now, if, if any board member have a comment that they'd like to make at this time?
Yeah, I would like to make a brief comment that I am consistently amazed that this board and this leadership team on what you guys are doing. That, you know, it's, it's amazing from this virtual graduation to what Mr. Smith is talking about with the virtual learning, with Chromebooks and things like that. So like I said, I'm consistently, consistently amazed at the work that you guys are doing. I hate that I jumped into here at a crazy, crazy time in the world where we're doing everything probably a little bit differently than we used to. But I just appreciate all, all the good work that you guys are doing.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Anyone else? Okay, if there are no other comments from the board, then board, I would like to entertain a motion at this time to go into executive session.
I make a motion, we go into executive session.
Actually, I'd like to make a motion because I think we have to be a little bit more specific. So I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for negotiations, compensation, and employment of employees.
Okay, that, that's a good motion. Can I get a second?
I second it.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote? Mr. Smith, your computer is muted again. There you go. Okay.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Coupalletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. We will go into executive session, and we will not come back out to do any more official business. So I guess now we're in the hands of Mrs. Rhonda Hobbs to get us moved over to a private room. All right, so we ended our executive session at 8:19. Now we can take a motion to end our work session. Jeff, you still on for that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn our executive session.
Thank you.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Coupalletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously.
Have a good evening.
All right. Thank you all so much for meeting up with us tonight. And thank you, Rhonda, again for all your help. And thank you, Waycross, for videotaping the part of the session that you did. Everybody be safe, and we'll see you next week on the 18th for our regular meeting.